Tonight, St. Charles County Council. We will start with our invocation tonight, which is Pastor Ron Boyer. He is with New Melly Baptist Church. And then I will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. If you would stand and please remove your caps for our prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and esteemed colleagues of this council. As we are coming here tonight, I thought it was mindful to remind us that Isaiah, and Isaiah 33:22 said, "The Lord is our law-giver; the Lord is our judge; the Lord is our king." Thus, our founding fathers took our three branches of government from that passage of Scripture. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Almighty God, we acknowledge tonight your sovereignty and your presence and that our government was birthed from your heart, Lord. Government you gave, Father, as an aid to people, not as an oppressor of people. And as we gather tonight before this body to bring matters of concern for this county, Lord, I pray for wisdom and guidance as you give these men understanding and making decisions. And decisions will be made, Father, based on the best interest of people, not on political agendas or financial profit. But, Father, I pray you will guide everything. That I know in these types of meetings, Father, sometimes emotions and passions rise and get heated, but I pray that you will control and guide emotions. It will be mindful of a proper decorum here, Father. That you'll bless this meeting, that the governance of St. Charles County will be done for your glory and for your honor. We pray this in your Son Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin. Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
So we have a public presentation tonight. The annual Manufacturing Day is coming up. So Scott Drachnik, I will turn the floor over to you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, and good evening. Scott Drachnik, St. Charles County Workforce Business Development, 3.1 unemployment for three consecutive months in a row, the lowest in the St. Louis region. There you go.
All right.
Tonight, we have a special proclamation. For the last five years, we have been celebrating Manufacturing Day here in St. Charles County. This year, we're actually calling it Manufacturing Day Mania because there are two weeks of activities, and the key ones that we want to focus on tonight are October 3rd, Wednesday, at the St. Charles Community College, and October 6th, Friday, at Rankin in Wentzville. We're going to have about 1,000 middle school and high school students coming out, interacting with manufacturers from around the region, and then they'll be going off to 10 or 12 different tour sites throughout the area. So good hands-on experience, good excitement, because they're going to realize what we've been saying for more than a year now, that manufacturing is alive and well in St. Charles County. Related to that, we always like to honor a company that's making that a reality. And so tonight, we're going to be giving a proclamation and hearing briefly from Nike Air Manufacturing Innovation out at the Missouri Research Park. They've been a part of the St. Charles County community since 1995, and they have now been working through the process to do a 75,000-square-foot expansion at their facility. They've got about 640 employees. They've been working with the county staff on workforce issues, community development, permitting, the whole bit, and they've been a big integral part of the Manufacturing Day planning. So with that said, with your indulgence, I'd like to introduce Katie Weber, who is the Director of Manufacturing for Nike Air.
Thank you. We're extremely proud to be a manufacturer of a high-tech component for Nike footwear right here in St. Charles County. We're also extremely excited about our pending expansion. We'll be able to increase our manufacturing capacity as well as improve our existing infrastructure and employee amenities. And we really couldn't have done it without the help and the support of the St. Charles government. We really appreciate the partnership, and we look forward to continuing with you as we grow our manufacturing business. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we have a plaque to recognize them, a proclamation from the county executive.
If anybody would like to make any public comments on our tax rates for 2017, the floor
And for folks who don't realize it, Nike Air products, they hold the patent, they hold the trademark, those products are made here and sold around the world, so we're making
is open. Mr. Deenoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, Arnie A.C.
a difference in that area. So with that said, I know we've got a plaque and proclamation, want to call these folks forward, and going to take some pictures with your indulgence.
Excellent.
It's a real pleasure for me to present this proclamation, and we visited here a little
Deenoff, public advocate and county resident. The public tax hearing for the 2017 deals with both personal property tax and real estate taxes.
bit a while ago.
Slated by the Director of Finance and the County Executive, the recommendation for
And Councilman Hollander and I are actually old enough to remember basketball before Nike.
the general fund is zero for 2017. However, if you recall, there's some concerns about two council members.
It did exist.
And they probably have made quite an impact.
About three council meetings ago, Councilman Joe Cronin of District 1 had mentioned increasing
Chuck Taylor's baby.
Yeah. Quite an impact, but it's hard to imagine basketball today without Nike.
the real estate property taxes for either 2017 or looking at it at 2018.
And just keep making those babies in St. Charles County, and we'll keep the balls bouncing
In the past, John White has talked about bags of peanuts and the cost of county government,
and the kids having fun. Congratulations.
and has also indicated increasing the real estate tax rate of the tax levy. Steve Elman appeared three weeks ago on Charlie Brennan Show, CBS 1120 KMOX radio, and I called him to discuss this idea proposal of Mr. Cronin with Mr. Elman. Mr. Elman stated that he is not in favor and is opposed to any, and I repeat, any increase in any new taxes for St. Charles County. I will hold our county executive to vetoing any type of legislation of increasing our taxes. We rely on sales taxes in our county. Our income is up 12% from 2016 in sales tax alone. Our population is up to 433,000 county residents. Spending retail dollars and paying sales taxes is what's driving our county economy and what's paying our county bills for county services. The county's new construction for 2016 has gone up $210 million in increased building permits for both residential and commercial structures. Just because we're growing does not mean that we do not have to be responsible to us as taxpayers and to you yourselves as individuals. This cannot be unlimited money that's free in so-called money grab for money trees. The road fund levy is to be generated at .1879. On a $250,000-valued home, with the equation, it would cost taxpayers $89.25. The road special tax is a half a cent on sales tax. It's a big, huge revenue generator, and I ask that we also rescind that .1879 and put it to zero this year. The dispatch fund levy is supposed to be, as proposed, at .0422 cents for 100 assessed valuation. On a $250,000-valued home, would cost county taxpayers $20.05. Again, we need to rescind this and make it zero because we get 95% of our income from sales tax and people spending money in the retail establishments. These can be supported by the increase of these sales taxes, 12% from last year, 2016. The rates are up, our revenues are up, and we need to be cognizant and responsible to taxpayers. You can't go give, 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 take, take, take without giving some relief back to our We currently pay 1% to the general county sales tax on every dollar purchased at a retail establishment. We then pay half a cent on every dollar spent to the county road board in terms of sales taxes. So just to sum up, I'm asking that we put zero at all three funds. Zero for the general tax fund levy, zero for the road fund levy, and zero for the dispatch fund levy. We can absorb this by the huge increase in sales taxes that have been coming on and going up, increasing every year, and increased dramatically from 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the tax rates for 2017? Last call. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on the tax rates. We will move on to public comments.
I have one card, and it's Arnie Deenoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, Arnie A.C. Deenoff, public advocate and resident. Again, when the Charlie Brennan Show came up three weeks ago on KMOX, I brought up the suggestion or the issue of the county employing lobbyists. We have a problem of employing our good old boyfriends as state lobbyists. Mr. Elman claims that we only have one lobbyist, but that is a pure lie to the residents of our region. We have two full-time lobbyists that discounting employees. We have a lobbyist at $75,000 apiece, plus expenses, meals, administration, postage, and other giveaways that we give to legislatures and people of the executive branch. That's $150,000 plus $75,000 in expenses, which comes to a total of $250,000 from the 2017 annual budget that we pay every year. Where's our return on investment? We have one lobbyist that's for six months in Jefferson City before the legislature, and then we have another lobbyist full-time at the East West Gateway Coordinating Councils of Governments, which, by the way, Steve Elman sitting to my right, the county executive, is a vital and key member of that board. He basically gets everything that he wants, and what he asks for comes to St. Charles County without the employment of a $75,000 lobbyist and $75,000 in expenses to take those people out to lunch and to glorious meals. We then have two staff members, the Chief of Staff, Vicki Hueselman, that $60,000 of her salary is paid to go to Jefferson City and to monitor from the office across the hall state legislation. We then have the Assistant Director of Administration to my right, Jennifer George, that we pay $75,000 of her salary, is committed to half-time of looking at state legislation and related goings-on in Jefferson City. We need to abolish these outlandish and embarrassing employment contracts to Steve Elman's friends, who he met in the legislature. We have zero return on investment. We have 12, repeat, 12 elected members of the House of Representatives that represent St. Charles County. We have two state senators that are our public advocates, including Steve Elman and John Lycam, the Director of Administration, who makes $184,000 plus benefits in a county car. That is ridiculous that we pay all these people. We don't have any return on our investment, and it needs to come to a stop. I ask that you abolish in the upcoming budget hearings and ask that you abolish these outrageous government contracts to lobbyists who don't do anything but are paybacks from Steve Elman to his buddies that were former legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deenoff. Is there anyone else to speak?
Those are all the cards I have.
Any other public comments to be made? We will close public comments at this time. We'll go to oral report from the county executive.
Nothing this evening.
With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda, or is there a motion to be made?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the consent agenda passes. We'll move on to bills for final passage. We'll start with Bill 4511.
Bill number 4511, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from PR Park Recreational District to A Agricultural District as per application RZ 1708.
Any questions or comments about this bill? Seeing none, would you call the roll?
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with floodway fringe overlay district to I-1FF Light Industrial District with floodway fringe overlay district as per application RZ 1709.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4512? Seeing none, call the roll. Bill number 4512 passes. We'll move on to Bill 4512.
Bill number 4512, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with floodway fringe overlay district to I-1FF Light Industrial District with floodway fringe overlay district as per application RZ 1709.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4512? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with floodway fringe overlay district to I-1FF Light Industrial District with floodway fringe overlay district as per application RZ 1709. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4512 passes. We'll move on to Bill 4513.
Bill number 4513, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO concerning the personnel administration plan and amending the 2017 annual budget to amend the pay grade of the director of facilities maintenance.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4513? Seeing none, call the roll.
An ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO concerning the personnel administration plan and amending the 2017 annual budget to amend the pay grade of the director of facilities maintenance. Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Bill number 4513 passes. We'll move on to Bill 4515.
Bill number 4515, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2017.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4515? Seeing none? We'll move on to Bill 4515.
An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2017. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill number 4511 passes. We'll move on to Bill 4512.
Bill number 4512, an ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with floodway fringe overlay district to I-1FF Light Industrial District with floodway fringe overlay district as per application RZ 1709.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4512? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
An ordinance amending the zoning district map of the county of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from AFF Agricultural District with floodway fringe overlay district to I-1FF Light Industrial District with floodway fringe overlay district as per application RZ 1709.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill number 4512 passes. We'll move on to Bill 4513.
Bill number 4513, an ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO concerning the Personnel Administration Plan and amending the 2017 annual budget to amend the pay grade of the director of facilities maintenance.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4513? Seeing none, call the roll.
An ordinance amending Section 115.710 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO concerning the Personnel Administration Plan and amending the 2017 annual budget to amend the pay grade of the director of facilities maintenance.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill number 4513 passes. Once again, welcome to our new director. We wish you the very best. We're counting on you, so don't let us down. Just kidding. Bill number...
No, we're not.
Yes, we really are, actually, in a big way. Bill number 4514.
Bill number 4514, an ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number One, Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1, and accepting said grant in the amount of $551,798 for design and construction of apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4514? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing execution of Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission State Block Grant Agreement, Amendment Number One, Airport Improvement Program Grant Project 16-111A-1, and accepting said grant in the amount of $551,798 for design and construction of apron rehabilitation at Smart Field Airport.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Bill number 4514 passes. On to Bill 4515.
Bill number 4515, an ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2017.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4515? Seeing none?
An ordinance fixing and establishing the rate and levying of taxes for the general revenue fund and for various special funds of and for the county of St. Charles, Missouri for the year 2017.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
That concludes our bills for final passage with the passage of Bill 4515. We'll move on to bills for introduction, and we start with Bill 4516.
Bill number 4516, requested by Michael Herbert, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance repealing Chapter 631 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri OSCCMO relating to issuance of certain occupational licenses for fence installers by St. Charles County under Title VI OSCCMO.
Any questions or comments about 4516?
What's the purpose of this? What's the... Mike, what's the purpose of this? Mike?
Or Jared?
Earlier in the year, you may or you may not remember that we took a look at the building codes, and so we got rid...
I didn't remember any discussion about that.
You know?
We did. Are you serious?
We may have. And so one of the things that we did is we moved that fence height back up to six feet.
Yes.
And so now that we don't require a permit for any fences, it didn't make any sense to require the contractors to get licensed with the county to install those fences.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments about this? We'll move on to Bill 4517.
Bill number 4517, requested by Mike Klinghammer, sponsored by Mike Ehlum and Mike Klinghammer, an ordinance establishing a new traffic regulation and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4517?
Michael, what's the purpose of going this route?
It's the purpose of it?
Yes.
The folks in that neighborhood ask us to put a stop sign in. It didn't meet all the requirements for the traffic engineer's perspective where it was required to have one, and this puts a stop sign in where the neighborhood has...
Any other questions or comments about Bill 4517? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 4518.
Bill number 4518, requested by Mary Anger, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance designating and recognizing the Greater St. Charles Convention and Visitors Bureau as the state fiscal year 2019 through 2021 representative destination marketing organization, DMO, for tourism in St. Charles County as required for participation in the Missouri Division of Tourism's Cooperative Marketing Program for the state fiscal year 2019 through 2021 funding cycle.
Any questions or comments about 4518?
Mary, does this have anything to do with currently what we're doing, or has this changed things, or what does this do? Just solidify the contract, or what does this do?
This is just for the Missouri Department of Tourism money, so that they can... it designates them to get that money.
Going to this bureau and not to the county, is that what...
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they're handling the advertising arm.
Correct.
Yes. So it's just extending. Any other questions or comments? So Bill number... We'll move on to Bill number 4519.
Bill number 4519, requested by Hope Woodson, sponsored by Mike Ehlum, an ordinance for receipt of grant funds in the amount of $5,000 from Matty's Fund for the Division of Humane Services, a division within the Department of Public Health for targeted veterinary care, and amending the 2017 budget adopted by ordinance 16-104 by appropriating additional funds in the general fund budget Division of Humane Services.
Any questions or comments about Bill 4519? Seeing none, that'll wrap up our bills for introduction. Are there any action to be taken on either of the tabled bills?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements in miscellaneous. Do you want to make a comment earlier?
Oh, I was just going to say that on the tax public hearing, that there are no increases, and the county hasn't raised taxes in, what, 15 years or something? So if I remember that right, so...
You should have found out the property tax.
Yeah, the public hearing, yeah.
Right. I think Bob calculated that by the tax rate that's been set well below the lawful authority until last year and this year, where we really don't have the ability to reinstall it, we've passed on $77 million in taxes that would have otherwise been collected from our taxpayers.
I just want to set the record straight. The taxes, the council is not increasing taxes, and they haven't been increased, and so I'm just making that point.
Any other questions or comments?
One other comment.
Yes, sir.
I do want to recognize our police department. They have the situation where they work very closely in tandem with the city of St. Charles at the police department on Friday night. By all accounts, our guys did one heck of a job. They diffused what could have been a very volatile situation, and I heard from numerous people that they did it with the right amount of respect for people on both sides of the discussion and did it in a way that maintained control but didn't escalate the situation by our actions. So, job well done, Chris. I owe you guys...
Thanks. I owe you credit to the chief. He developed a plan early last week in anticipation of this, and without that, it wouldn't have been as successful as it was. So you deserve most of the credit for that and putting that together.
You guys worked well with the same PD also, and it turned out well, so thank you for your diligence.
I was excited to see that it was pretty much over before it started. So before any television cameras got out, everybody was getting back in cars and heading back, and everybody was alive and well, and we didn't have anything that could have gone out of control. So that was very good. Yes, sir?
I just want to say that, speaking for our police department, they very much appreciate the support of the council.
By all means.
And not, not every police department in the region has that kind of support.
Well, I think the City of St. Charles did a great job, and I know the city was standing behind theirs, and, um, I appreciate the fact, I know from time to time, we talk about training a lot, and I know we've passed a lot over the past few years in training facilities and making sure that, um, our police have the equipment that they need. So I appreciate the fact that we were able to provide that, everybody could stay safe on both sides. So it was good that it went without incident. So with that-
I would like to thank Joanne for keeping us informed, and Captain Hunt, too, keeping us well informed, and also, um, as you know, the council will always support their police as long as they support law and order, because we are a nation of law and order, and, um, that's what we expect out of the police, and you guys did a great job.
Excellent.
Yes, I would like to, uh, uh, have a closed meeting per state statute RSMO 610. Dot 0211.
Motion made in second. Would you call the roll?
We need a roll call. Good job. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Would you tell my wife that I did a good job? I would appreciate that. We will resume after the closed session.
My wife is taking one for this week.
Yeah. She would say, "You got one."
Is this my only...
Motion that we come out of closed session.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion adjourned in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned.